Good evening, everyone. Welcome. If you would please make certain your cell phones and other devices are on, um, vibrate. And if you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please stay standing for a moment. Um, those of you not aware, we lost a longtime resident business owner and former committee and commission member Gary Eliason, uh, passed away last week. And, uh, well, please have a, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Good man.
All right, we are reconvening our meeting with the library trustees. And, um, I believe everyone's here tonight?
Yes, they made it.
All right, and, uh, who's the chairperson? Hello there. Hi Dave.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Dave, you all have a recommendation, and I assume you know the applicant?
Yes. Of course, I'm so wonderful with names that it's gone out of my brain already.
It's Christine.
I also call her Christine Freitas, but that's not right either. They're maiden names, yes. So, and, uh, your board is recommending Christine for the vacancy, uh, which is requiring a joint meeting of the Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen, and then she can run on the ballot for the remaining of the term in April.
Yeah.
Good. The board have any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for your willingness.
All right, we'll ask for a roll call vote. We'll start with the trustees. If each of you could just say your name, and if you're voting yes, yes. If no, no.
Deborah Lancaster, yes. Mary Good, yes.
David Church, yes. Scott Ames, yes.
Selectmen?
Kenahan, yes.
Oh, there he is.
Lawrence, yes. It's unanimous for the appointment of Kristen Roberts to the library trustees. Congratulations. We're not going to bore with you, bore you all with staying to our meeting, so you're welcome to leave.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for rescheduling. We're sorry that you had to do that.
There's openings down front. What do you want now?
All right, the water department? Hello?
Howdy.
Can you have the floor?
All right, thank you for inviting us. Um, I wish to also thank you for the Employee Appreciation Day. Um, anytime you get something for nothing is always good, but to see the selectmen standing there cooking hamburgs and hot dogs for us was a very good thing. Um, as you know, the water departments, uh, we produce a product. Really, we're not a service. We're, you know, 24/7, 365. Um, we do a highly technical job. Um, we don't, we work with electricity, we work with water. You know, the two don't go together. Um, so we look for people with technical abilities when we do do a hire. Um, on a good day, you go to work and you come home. Um, the people that work with us have to, you have to have senses, because when you walk into one of our buildings, it's hard to tell what's going to happen. So you have to know the sound, senses, smells. Um, a lot of the chemicals we work with are caustic, so accidents can happen. Um, I'm going to show you, this was a good day. So that's one side, and that's the other side. So you can guess where the pipe was when I burst.
You can sell, sell that on eBay.
Yeah. So if I had been facing the wrong way, I wouldn't be sitting here today.
eBay, we can sell them.
So we, um, we, we went, interviewed candidates, and, um, we narrowed down the selection. In the end, the selection came down to somebody who had gone out and gotten all of their water licenses. Not all of them, but he has half of them. He has his hydraulics, he's got his CDL permit. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce, um, our candidate of choice.
My name is Ray Medina. It's nice to meet you guys.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity for employment. This is where I'd like to be somewhere 10, 20, 30 years down the line. And, uh, I've got all my technical skills. I've gone to technical school. Um, like you said, I've gone for the licenses. I have a CDL permit. I have pretty much everything that you guys would need. Thank you.
Commissioners want to speak?
No.
No?
I think they're here for another part of your meeting.
All right. You have any questions?
Um, quickly, your work experience?
Uh, I've worked for Bay State Ford. I've worked masonry. I've done laborist position. I've done electrical. I've done like a little bit of everything, mostly mechanical.
Okay. Um, and when I have a question, would you mind elaborating more on the hiring process? Um, how many candidates, how many interviews?
All right, so we had a total of eight candidates. We, we, um, we advertised in the enterprise, so we did that for a week, because it was only a few dollars more than three days. We also advertised on one of the water websites. I'm not sure whether it's Mas, I believe it's Mas Waterworks, or it could be Plymouth Waterworks, County Waterworks. That, I think, is actually, it's still out there. It hasn't been pulled off their site, but it, as it goes through the time, it goes down. So out of the eight candidates, two of the candidates didn't live close enough to be viable candidates. Obviously, if somebody's basement's flooding, you don't want to wait two hours for somebody to respond. Um, another candidate, I, well, I can't say, but, so then we had four candidates that we'd, um, we called for interviews. One of the candidates refused to call us back to be interviewed. Of the other two candidates, um, one had no licenses, no CDL, no nothing. The other candidate, the second candidate that would have been hired had Raymond not been the choice candidate, had a CDL, very nice young man. Um, but Raymond had all of the technical, the licenses and everything that require. If I hire somebody that doesn't have the licenses, I lose them for the first year and a half to two years going out to school. So it's like I hire somebody, and then I only have him half a day. So you can't get a lot accomplished in that time. It requires that, that the schooling doesn't take you all of the way. You have to go home after that and start reading some very, very boring technical stuff. And then you've got to memorize it, because you're going to be quizzed on it. They've really taken water licenses to a new plateau. It's becoming a, a field, and the pay scale is coming up with it. So it's really hard to pass the upper level tests.
Any idea how much we saved by?
So we saved right now about two grand. Or I should say 2,000. I'll make it more pleasant sounding. And I've saved almost a year of time. If he gets his next license right off the bat, then I'll have saved a year and a half. He'll take one more class for the distribution side, and that takes him through all four licenses. But it'll be up to him to spend his time at home, um, reading and memorizing it. It's a lot of reading and memorizing. They, they look, when they last reviewed what you need to know to pass the test, they started stacking up the books, and the stack was about this high. It's not a fair test, but it's one you have to pass to get there, and that's the way it is.
Yep. Okay. Um, one last thing, in full disclosure, would you mind disclosing your relationship?
Yes, I know, um, the family. I know his mother. I know his father. His mother actually lives in my house.
Okay. And the board was fully aware of that, correct? All right. Um, I am a little hesitant because of that, but I understand that, I've talked to David at length about it, and I understand he is the most qualified candidate. Um, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Ray Medina to the water department.
I'll second a motion.
A motion, a second. I have one further question. Was it unanimous vote of the board?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just for clarification, so people wonder why we're hiring a water employee. Um, it's part of the collecting and bargaining unit that negotiates directly with the Board of Selectmen. Uh, so the final appointing authority is us, but you guys did go through the interview and advertising process. Uh, it just needs to be brought to us really to be ratified. Uh, move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's thank you very much for the, taking the time to speak with us tonight and to appoint Raymond.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity, you guys.
Congratulations.
All right, warrants and Board of Selectmen business. Ratify the Fairbank. David?
Yep, so, um, so this is a private vendor who is a landscape architect. Um, the contract is before you, just to ratify the contract. Uh, it is mandated by the Stan Foundation that we have one, and they are paying for it, so it's no, no use of town funds.
Any questions?
Oh, I think, I think it's great to, you know, just to question, you know, voters voted for this, and they wanted to know what was going on. I'd say we're looking for another grant, so we could move back on there. And Mallory's done a great job with this and keep this thing moving, so we can complete the mission here.
Does an emotion, Alton?
There's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, special police officer appointment. I believe we already interviewed this gentleman, um, in a prior interview.
We did.
And now he's up to be appointed for a special. Is there anything else we need to know, David?
There is not.
Ezekiel Schultz?
Sanchez.
Sanchez, thank you. Um, gentleman was before us, um, for an interview for PI position. Right?
No, actually, it was for, uh, we hired three full timers, and he was number four on the list.
And this is, uh, with the recommendation of the police chief. We have that in our packet?
Yes.
Any further questions?
Motion to appoint Ezekiel Sanchez.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Disabled American Veterans. Uh, this is our annual request. Uh, they do, um, forget me not drive, request for September 22nd and 29th. Any questions?
Moved on as a request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Point Scott Gold or Treasurer, David?
Yep, so, uh, as you know, Scott has been appointed by this board to be the treasurer collector. Under the new public records law, every department head has to be formally named as the records access officer. And so since Scott is now the department head, you just have to take that formal vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, accept minutes for approval for June 21st, July 19th, August 3rd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Accept minutes for review of August 16th?
Moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Accept treasurer collector, David?
Yep, so the next one is the fact that we will not ever have, or at least maybe for the next 30 years, have another screening committee for our treasurer collector. And as such, the legislative statute allows the parent board that did the original appointment of the screening committee to approve and accept those minutes. So that's what's before you tonight.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
David, do we need an official vote to disband the committee?
It wouldn't hurt.
All right.
Moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, discuss residents on committees and boards.
So this came in after you appointed Mr. Robert Marks to the council on aging back in July, uh, yes, in July. Uh, Robert has been an active member of our council on aging, came with the unanimous support of the council on aging board. And you may recall that the director of council on aging Marilyn Mather was here speaking on his behalf. You also met with the gentleman, and, uh, and so there was no issues or complaints. However, he is a resident of Bridgewater, not West Bridgewater. We have 10 available members, 10 available spots on the council on aging. We only had seven filled, so it was nice to be able to put somebody else on that committee. One of our residents, however, has now questioned that appointment. Has nothing to do with Mr. Marks himself, but she's uncomfortable with the fact that we have placed a non-resident onto one of our local boards. I then had a conversation with town council. We've done extensive research into the statute, and there is nothing statutorily that prevents us from placing residents, and there is nothing in our local bylaws that prevent it as well. So she has requested that the board take this under discussion, that at our annual town meeting, as to whether or not we want to make any type of amendment to our bylaws. Either, one, one of her biggest concerns was the finance committee. Um, so whether or not we want to mandate that we have only residents on all of our committees, or some of our committees, but she requested the board at least take it under advisement.
I just want to add to that, David. I think, you know, if you look through the list of vacancies, there are dozens and dozens of vacancies, and, um, a lot of, um, staff, going yourself and Mallory, serve on some of the boards. Uh, some clergy that may not live in town, but, um, serve a church in town, have served on boards and committees. And, um, I think, by all means, I think the board always gives preference to a, to a resident before any appointments are made. And I know in the past, we've discussed residents and non-residents on board, and we've always disclosed when a non-resident's being appointed. Uh, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but of course, we always prefer West Bridgewater people. We just don't have enough people stepping up. We have a rent control board now that can't even meet, because we don't have anyone on there, despite the fact reaching out to numerous people and numerous times on social media and whatnot, uh, and on the internet to get people on these committees. So, as of right now, unless people step up and start filling some of the vacancies, I've got to take people that are willing to serve that are qualified, and that individual is very active in our, in our council on aging along with theirs, and it was a good, good fit. Again, we still have vacancies on there that are, that are unfilled. So, um, that said, I don't know if the board has anything else to add.
Well, I'm, I feel the same way as you do, Jerry, but I hate to, uh, you know, if you get somebody that's really qualified, I mean, that's, this person here, from what I see, and I go over there quite a bit, and I see, uh, he really gets in here, it's pretty hard to turn somebody down. And like you say, we have a lot of vacancies, uh, that come in there that we can't fill, you know?
And it is important to point that that is, is really a steering committee. They don't, uh, they're not, they don't govern any employees, or they're not, um, in charge of that building per se. Um, they're more of a steering organization. Uh, I think with the finance committee, again, maybe if we want to amend the bylaw, that would say finance committee members have to be, but I can't imagine, um, the appointing committee would ever appoint a non-resident for the finance committee. But again, that one's not under our jurisdiction.
No, I think all your points are valid and excellent. Unfortunately, most of our, most of the positions are non-competitive.
And any further?
No.
David, could you maybe, um, take a look at, um, what boards and commissions, uh, you feel are more just steering boards and committees, and which ones are really the, meat and bones of our town government, but that maybe should remain with resident requirements? We could actually adopt those as a policy, those that fall underneath, under our jurisdiction. And, um, yeah, we can take that up at a future meeting. Okay, Old Colony Planning Council?
Yep, they're looking to, they've been requested to be able to do research for a clean energy project. They're reaching out to all the local jurisdictions that they serve, looking for support letters, which is really just a, a vote to, to state that, that there would be the right regional planning agency to conduct the work.
Alton, you have anything on that?
No, I just think, I think it's a good idea. Let them look into that, you know? You know, get back to us.
Motion to send a letter of support.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Warwick White Foundation requests for entertainment and liquor license.
Yep, I'll ask you to table that, please.
Yep. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Retirement of the fire chief?
So, uh, 1989, the chief was, was appointed. So unfortunately, he is going to retire effective January 1st. For those who do not know, the chief will be turning 65 next year, and it's a requirement by statute that the age of 65 is, he is required to retire, unless he decides to just be an administrative chief, which he doesn't have any interest in doing. He first joined our department as a caller in 1972, so he certainly has a long tenure and, and, um, is, and is truthfully, one of the most easiest-going guys to be able to spend time with. So unfortunately, he has retired, or has made his announcement to retire, and so I want to make sure the full board was aware of it. And at a future meeting, I'd like to bring back to you and discuss what we're going to do for his replacement. We use an assessment center in reference to the police chief. Um, my recommendation most likely will be to do that in this situation as well. But again, I just, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
This is going to be effective, what, the 1st of the year, or?
That's what the letter says, yes.
Okay, okay. Well, how, how long has he been on that fire department? He's been, been on there for, for years. I mean, I don't know.
Forty-five years.
Forty-five years, yeah. And he certainly has done a great job for us. And the, you know, from what it was from a call to that and to where it is today. I saw them in action the other night where the doctor comes, they're very, very fortunate to have the doctor, actually comes along with them in emergency situations. I saw that on my street the other night. And they, they're, they're very, very versatile what they're doing. And I appreciate what he's done all these years.
Thank you, Alton. We have our number one call firefighter back there, too, the longest-serving call firefighter.
Thirty-seven years.
Thirty-seven years. Badge one now, right?
Excuse me?
Badge one?
I'm going to tell you, 11.
Oh, that's, that's good. All right. Um, so you'll bring forward a plan for the, okay, uh, policy of hiring personnel?
So, um, I brought this to your attention, because the chairman and I, and the other individuals and I have spoken about this. And, uh, as the appointing authority for department heads, we would follow the current policy, which is that we would name a screening, if the board would name a screening committee. The screening committee would then forward names. I would vet the names, and then you would interview the finalists and make the appointment, as we do with Mr. Golda. The question that arose as to what we would do for individuals that is below that level, that answer directly to department heads, and I believe that I captured the spirit of my discussions in this draft, but basically what we would do is, is that myself, the assistant town administrator, along with the department head, would solicit names, do the interviews, make and choose the selection, bring that final selection back to this board for your ratification. So the only difference is, is that you're just not doing the final interviews at that level.
This is the first draft. So what I'd like to do is just keep it on the agenda for the next meeting for approval, and just vote tonight to accept this as a draft.
Will this be an issue for the treasurer position?
Well, it's certainly part of the conversation, is that we currently have a vacancy in the treasurer collector position, and one of our employees that is currently in a different department has applied for it, and she is more than capable. Uh, and so we are hoping to be able to move as quickly as possible if she is the person selected. So what we could do is, if you would like, to capture the spirit of everything, is to, uh, have the, as the chairman says, is table the position, table this policy. However, institute the policy specifically just for this position in the meantime, so we can move with alacrity on filling that position.
Absolutely. We'll move forward. Um, intend a motion to move forward, following the proposed policy, and, um, we'll take formal vote on the policy at the next meeting.
So moved. Second.
Alton and Anthony, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Anybody? First lines from the public to determine a course of action. We don't have any. Public comment period. Um, during the public comment period, I'll say we had, today was our first wonderful day of school, and, uh, from what I've seen, it went very, very well. And, uh, congratulations to the superintendent and her entire staff. Uh, the police department was in heavy attendance, making sure everything was, uh, running smooth. I missed Tracy today on drop-off day. She had to run over to work, but, uh, it was a good, good opening day. So, uh, congratulations to the school system. And if we would, uh, as we try to do every year, send a congratulations on a smooth opening, and as a reminder that we're always here to help when needed, to each of the principals and the superintendent, please. Okay?
How about your back?
Sure. That would be a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It'll be Anthony and Alton.
How about your back?
Yes, Park Day is Sunday, September 10th. Come on down. A lot of fun. A lot of organization's going to be there, and should be another great day. This is 26th year. Public comment period. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just, it's more of a question, but I know Dave is going to give a presentation on merging. I am standing up. Get a new joke. I've been hearing that one all my life. Um, will there be a public comment period after he does his presentation about the merger, or a chance to ask questions and make comments?
You can. Uh, just so you know, the, uh, it was, it's just a presentation-
Right.
-on the merger of the three departments. There's no action.
Right.
Uh, this was the goal of one, yeah, but I, as far as I know, you can ask him questions if you want.
Okay, all right. I don't have any questions to ask, Dave. I have more of, of comments to make, to the three of you that, okay? Just wanted to make sure I could be heard. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Town Administrators Report, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get to the report, I'm going to actually, in the public comment, add one item that I found out today. I want to give a lot of credit to our town clerk, Annie Anantelli. It came to my attention today that she is running a American Red Cross drive in front of her office for all the victims of, of the disaster in, in Texas with Hurricane Harvey. So I want to make sure that anybody who would like to donate, there is a box down at, across from her office, where you can either deposit cash, or you could deposit checks made up directly to the American Red Cross. If you deposit cash, she will aggregate all the cash, use one money order, and send that over to, to the Red Cross. Um, she put the box out there last week. She intends to take it down this Friday. But again, I think that it really shows the spirit of the individuals that work for this town, and our residents that are living in this town, that they're willing to go above and beyond without being requested to do so, to take care of people that live 2,000 miles away.
David, while you're on that, I, uh, forgot, the Lions Club will be hosting a breakfast for dinner get-together. That will be at, uh, Daybreak Restaurant. Daybreak is donating the facility, all the food, the service, the cooks and everything. The Lions Club will be waiting tables. Um, again, it's a breakfast for dinner to benefit the hurricane victims in Texas, and it's, uh, fifteen, $12 a person, be a limited menu, and that's Friday the 15th, from 5 to 8. And today, we got word that, uh, an unannounced donor will match up to $5,000. Uh, for whatever the Lions Club raises, they'll match up to five grand. So that's great news. So even if you can't stay to eat, stop by, drop off a check, grab something to go if you want, um, we want to get to that five grand, and that, that is spectacular. Like you said, it's great to see community coming together to help people we don't even know.
No, I think that's one of the reasons that makes this town so desirable. Um, so with that said, down, down to my report, an update on municipal aggregation. You'll recall that some time ago, town meeting has already approved this. It was about a year and a half ago. The plan is now, just this past week, been approved by the Department of Public Utilities. Our next step is is that we will be issuing an RFP, Request for Proposal. We will be soliciting price bids from private vendors. Once those price bids come in, we will then compare them to accept rate by national grid. Uh, if it is lower, then what we will do is we will send information out to all residents, informing them that they have the ability to be able to opt out. Uh, and if they choose to opt out, they could stay with national grid. If they do not, because obviously the rate is lower, they have to do nothing. Uh, we take care of it all from there. So it's just an opportunity, whether it's at the municipal level, or at the resident and commercial level, that they have an opportunity to save money, literally not having to do any work. Um, so again, just wanted to bring the board up to date on that.
What's the term of the bid? You know, is it a year?
Uh, we don't know yet. Uh, as we issue the RFP, we're, it'll either be a one-year, it could be a one-year, a two-year, or a three-year. We will be working with our consultant, which is Colonial Power Group, to determine the term.
All right. I know we've been working on this, Old Colony Planning Council, and we have several meetings on this, and I know, uh, you know, the intent is to try to see if we can get some lower, uh, electric rates for the, for the residents here. Like he said, all the determinants of where that thing's going to come out. We don't have to go along with it, and we can opt out at any time, if we feel that, uh, the way this thing is set up. You know, it sounds like a, a good thing, but it, it don't look like, you know, the rates are going to come down here, so these are, these are things that we can use there, and hope to, that, uh, somebody bids on it and brings it, brings it down. And it'll be a, a great advantage, I know, uh, not only for the town side, but this also includes the individual residents. So, thank you, David. I know you put a lot of work into this, too.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Um, so to echo my comments on the town clerk, she went above and beyond. So in our library director, uh, on August 21st, we had a partial solar eclipse. She decided to take it upon herself and put together an event. She expected a couple hundred people. Uh, her second-in-charge, Nanette, did a fantastic job. She actually contacted NASA, wrote a grant, and explained that they were expecting a couple hundred people, and see as to whether or not they would donate something, such as eyeglasses or money to purchase eyeglasses so you could watch it. NASA actually donated 450 glasses, something, which was just phenomenal, and we actually had over 750 people show up.
Fantastic, when you told me that. That's a lot of-
So 750 people came, some of which came from outside surrounding towns. The South Shore Astrological, Astrological, um, Society came. The Whitman-Hanson High School, uh, um, class came as well. Uh, if you watch the video, it's online. It's about eight minutes long. Ben Smith did a fantastic job. But again, I think that it shows really what the spirit of this town is, when our department heads and our residents do all those extra little things, and give people an opportunity to be able to, to view it. It was, really, she did a nice job, and I just thought that it would be wise for the board to know.
Is it possible to have an eclipse in our next town meeting? Could you arrange that for an interior eclipse, we can get people there? Because that's more than I think we even showed up for the high school.
I know, I know. No, she did a great job.
Just, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to send a letter of thanks to Nanette and Ellen for their-
So moved. Second.
Or an email, whichever one you prefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Town Hall roof project.
Yep, last update is in reference to the town hall. They were supposed to start the week after Labor Day, which would obviously be this week. However, they actually started last week. I can tell you, they've actually worked- last week, I can tell you they've actually worked additional hours, yesterday they were here past 6:30, right up until sunset. So they actually think that assuming that they do not get bad weather, then instead of it being a four-week project, it's gonna be a three-week project. Of course, they are working extra hours to get to that three weeks, but they're doing a really nice job. The second thing is, we are always concerned about parking and the impact that it would have. As you could see outside, they've really boxed off a smaller area than we originally anticipated, and we also want to make sure that there was no adverse impact to the historical museum, our back, we've been able to mitigate that as well. So again, they're doing a nice job, the job is getting done, and at the same time, there's as little impact as possible on the residents and the employees. And the last is, is a presentation to you, to the board, in reference to the potential for a merger of the Highway Forestry and potential Water Department as well, so. So with that said, on June 21st, the Board of Selectmen took a vote to task me with certain goals that they're looking for me to achieve this year. One member's goal was for me to present a proposal on a potential merger of the Highway and Forestry, and a separate one that would also include the potential creation of a full DPW, including Water as well. So tonight is that presentation. Here's our current structure, I apologize that it looks so small, but the Board of Selectmen are obviously up top. The Board of, thank you, the Board of Selectmen are up top, obviously myself, but then we have two departments that are lateral to each other, the Highway Superintendent and the Forestry Superintendent. And I have placed there what if we had a current Highway Superintendent who just retired, if he had been retained or stayed on, then what his current salary and benefits would, current salary would be, and the same thing with the Forestry Superintendent. And you could see what the current structure is below them as well. A couple of things I would ask you to note. One is, is that you will see under the current Highway Superintendent, that we have a vehicle maintenance department, and that vehicle maintenance person answers directly to the Highway Superintendent. But obviously, that person works in the same building as the Forestry Superintendent, but there is no direct line of command to that person. In addition to that, you'll notice that clerical is listed as .5, that is because she works part-time for the Highway Superintendent, and then part-time for the Forestry Superintendent. And the last thing that I will ask you to note, is that the transfer station laborer answers directly to the Highway Superintendent as well. However, there are times, depending on staffing levels, that a laborer from the Forestry Department will backfill and stay up at the transfer station if need be.
David, that clerical would actually, wouldn't that be .25 for each, because she's also part-time with the accountant?
It is, but I was only focusing on this, so I was saying half her time that she spends in the department is with one, and half her time is spent with the other. But from an accounting standpoint, you'd be right, it would be .25. Under the proposed structure, what we would do is, we would see that we would streamline it, and what I'm calling the traditional American government approach, or traditional American business approach. We would have the Board of Selectmen, obviously, as the, still overseeing everyone. Through me then would be a director, an assistant director, and that assistant director then would have a clear command structure that would oversee all the foremen and the laborers, would oversee the vehicle maintenance division, the clerical person, and the transfer station person as well. So now it is crystal clear as to who answers to who, and it's a streamlined approach. Again, this does not include Water at this point. Next page, I think that you can see from the chart that we just looked at, that there's some immediate issues. The clerical staff answers to two superintendents, and I can tell you, because I work with her and both superintendents, that at times, that becomes a concern. The laborer staff is small and it's less effective. We all know that if you were, we've all heard the old adage, divide and conquer. You would much rather face two small divisions versus one larger division, and the same could be used or said in here. We have two level, we have two department heads that manage the same building, but that are equivalent to each other, and again, I can tell you from past practice, that because there can be different opinions as to how the building should be managed, what should be fixed, what should be prioritized, that it can lead to a whole host of inefficiencies. In the absence of the Highway Superintendent, who actually oversees the Assistant Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent? Right now, there's no clear structure, can't answer the question, we don't provide an answer. Next page. The question then is, is that by combining the departments, do we actually resolve any of the issues, just by combining them, doing nothing else? My answer is yes. The clerical staff immediately knows who she answers to, there's no question about it. The laborer staff is no longer as small, it is one combined department, it is the opposite of divide and conquer. There is no longer two department heads, there is one department head, all the issues are resolved as to who is in charge of the building, and who is going to make decisions going forward. Again, the chain of command has been streamlined, it's immediately obvious to all involved. And the last is, is that the Assistant Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent has a clear line of command, that although he would answer, assuming it's a he, but he would answer directly to the assistant director, in the absence of the assistant director, the director would still be there, again, there's a clear line of command. It is not just about staffing, as to where the inefficiencies exist. When I came here, and I've been here for four years now, I didn't understand, looking at your budgets, why they were separated the way they are. These were my immediate questions, and they're my questions today. Why do we have a separate budget for streetlights? Streetlights is that entire budget of one line, it is managed by the Highway Superintendent. Why would not be just one line in the current highway budget, makes no sense to me, that's where it should be. Why do we have a separate budget for the Highway Administration and Highway Public Works? Again, the superintendent oversees it, why would you have two different budgets for that? Why do you have a separate budget line for vehicle maintenance? Vehicle maintenance is one department that answers directly to the Highway Department, there's no reason to have it as a separate line. And the last one is for waste disposal, part of the Highway's responsibility is waste disposal. Why you would have to have that as a separate budget, I don't understand that either. Continued on to the next page. We have six different budgets for the Highway Department, which falls in the scope of what my line of questioning was, and below those budgets are many recurring budget lines. For example, we have three separate property maintenance lines. This has no vehicle repair lines in the highway budget, except for vehicle maintenance, it turns out that there's two, but again, out of six departments, all of them, except for one has vehicles, we only have vehicle repair lines in two of them. We have four separate equipment repair lines, four separate labor lines, that is also, we have four separate overtime lines, and then we have three separate tools and supply lines, all answering to the same person, all answering to the same department. So that's pretty inefficient, and why is it, and the next page, when it refers to forestry, does the exact same thing. It duplicates all the same issues, except that the Forestry Department shares equipment with Highway, they share manpower with Highway, they share the building with Highway, and they share clerical with Highway. And again, your immediate issues when we look at budgets is as follows. It's added stress on management of budgets. How is it that you're not going to know as to which budget that you're going to put a vehicle repair line, if you're in the Forestry Department or you're in the Highway Department? Why would you choose one budget over the other? There's additional stress on the accounting staff, because they have to make sure that the superintendent picks the right one, or why did they pick that one? Here's what I came across two years ago. We can't utilize one budget for another, even though we have bottom-line budgets. So for example, the forestry budget, which is much smaller than the highway budget, had a repair they had to do to its truck, but yet, they had no additional money. The truck is used six months from the Highway Department for snowing, for snow removal. But we couldn't take money out of the Highway Vehicle Maintenance Line, even though there was plenty of money in the line, to pay for the repairs on the forestry vehicle, because it was outside the snow and ice season. So we had to actually go and do a transfer at the end of the year to make up for that money. It's just inefficient, doesn't make any sense, it's all used for the same purposes. And last thing, is that if we have separate line items, and truthfully, I really mean this when I say this, Steve Hobbs immediately comes to mind. Steve has been advocating for years that our budgets should be bottom-line budgets that encompasses all financial issues. I don't necessarily agree with him on all of those categories, but in this case here, he's entirely right. When you have one highway department that has four vehicle maintenance lines, it is much more difficult as a resident at town meeting, or a member of the finance committee that's looking at it, or a series of, just a couple of meetings, to really analyze what we're spending on vehicles for maintenance. That's just one example. So again, if we were to combine the departments, do we resolve any of these questions? The answer is yes. Is that if there's added stress on the management of budgets, do we fix that? Yeah, we do, because we minimize the budget lines. Everybody knows what a vehicle maintenance line is, now we just have one. We reduce the stress on the accounting staff, because they have minimal effort to have to reconcile. We don't have to worry about making transfers at the end, because all of our expenses will be grouped into one line. And again, as I say in the next one, because they will all be grouped, it will be much more easier, or much easier, for the finance committee to be able to analyze the budget, and for residents at town meeting when voting on the budget, to really see what we're spending for each one of the lines. I thought it was interesting, looking at the staff. One of the benefits to working in a municipality, is that our benefits are always really good, and usually far superior, they usually are superior to the private sector. I would argue that to be the case. One of the negatives, though, is, is that because when people take time off, it becomes much more difficult to be able to staff, and to be able to carry out the orders. So here's, for the forestry, a staff of four. In 2015, 253 working days, 81 days, at least one person was on vacation, used a personal day, or called in sick. That means one-third of the entire year, you didn't have a staff of four, you had a staff of three. For 14 days, at least two people were on vacation, called in sick, utilized a personal day. That means 6% of the year, you didn't have a staff of four, you had a staff of two. 2016, you could see the numbers are fairly equivalent. We'll turn the page, we'll look at the Highway Department next. A staff of seven. In 2015, same 253 working days, look at, 45% of the year, almost half of the year, you didn't have a full staff. 115 days, somebody was out. 47 days, a minimum of two people were out. Almost 20% of the year. 2016, similar numbers. And the one thing to keep in mind, is that the Highway Department is the first department that backfills the transfer station. So when you have three people calling sick, and you only have four people left, one person, if it's the same day it's open, is at the transfer station. That means you have a Highway Department of three. My question to the board is this, how do we expect our superintendents to carry out their responsibilities, if they have two or three people on, in some cases, five people on for half the year? They can't. That's why if we combine the departments, we immediately go to 10 or 11 laborers, even if a handful of people call in sick, take a personal day, now also, instead of only having two or three people on, we potentially have six or seven. Next page. Departments already work together well. They already know that they do snow and ice removal together. As I said earlier, although the Highway Department is the first line, to be able to cover the transfer station, the Forestry Department will do so as well. This past summer, after the center of town construction, we had to remove a retaining wall, both departments combined their resources and worked in order to remove the wall, and also, apparently, there was a handful of very large trees on school property this past summer, that the departments worked together as well. Next page. In 2007 and 2009, due to staffing shortages at the Forestry Department, the board already voted, and two members of this current board voted as part of that, that required cooperation and mutual assistance of both departments. Now both departments work well together, and I'm gonna get to this more in a moment, but I interviewed every single member of Highway and Forestry that was available last week, and a couple of members of Water, and it was interesting, because every single person said the same thing, that the two departments actually work very well together. We'll address that more in just a moment. But part of that was probably because it was mandated by the board only a handful of years ago. As I said, I did those interviews, and this is what I found out. They said the departments work well together, but you know what they also said, for the most part? They didn't work well together, or as well together in the past. So what we're doing is that right now, because we have two personalities that are in charge of their respective departments, that get along, work well together, and have synergies between the two of them, that these two departments work well together. But just about everybody also agreed, and through osmosis, I picked up the same, is that the departments is, were not working as well together in the past. So my immediate question is, are we always going to be subjected to the fact that we have good personalities in order to work well together? I don't think that we should depend on that. Some questioned the "ain't broken, don't fix" axiom. That's fair. If something seems to be working well, why change it? We shouldn't change it just for change's sake. But at the same exact time, the same people also acknowledged that when the personalities were different, they didn't work as well together. So what I found was that there were some negative comments, there was some positive comments, but they were mostly neutral comments. And regardless, even if they were positive, they all were concerned about whatever that change would be, again, that's human nature, that makes sense. There was one item that I thought there was a legitimate concern from the Highway laborers. The Highway laborers right now, because they are first and foremost the snow removal people during the snow season, is that if you only need a handful of laborers, is that they come in first, and then the forestry backfills. That apparently also is their rotation for sanding, or if there's not going to be snow, but it just looks like it's gonna be sleet. And because if we combine the two departments, that rotation would include more people, it would take longer for those current Highway laborers to be able to go through that cycle. So that does seem to be a legitimate concern, but I think that's something that we can So what does the town gain if we choose to merge the departments? First, it would be more consistent with a typical American government style. If you have a problem at Home Depot, you write a letter to the CEO, you write a letter to the president, you expect certain things to get done. You always look to see who is in charge, and you try to go the top person. Right now, we don't have a top person, it's all lateral. There's less duplication of effort, as I determined earlier. There's too much effort, especially from our accounting staff, but our superintendents as well, just figuring out exactly what line they should use to be able to tabulate an expense. And again, more streamlined decision-making. I can verifiably tell you that there was too many squabbles in the past between two different people, as to whether or not we should replace an overhead door. If we only had so much money, should we put the money into a door, or should we paint the building? We're no longer gonna have to worry about that decision-making, and we will have one boss for the entire department. Again, it will be easier budget analysis, it will be easier budget analysis from residents, it will be easier budget analysis from the finance committee, it will be easier budget analysis from this board, because it is your budget that goes to town meeting eventually for approval. In the morning, there is currently two brief sessions with the staff. There is one in the Forestry Department, there is one in the Highway Department. This will allow us to streamline it, to have one message in the morning, to have one staff meeting, and to make sure that we have a consistent message to all employees. And lastly, the town does save money. By using, by doing it this way, we will not backfill one labor, that saves us between the cost, or the savings, between the salary, plus also benefits of about $75,000. But it would be expected to be higher, because right now, we have two foremen. And my recommendation is, is that if the selectmen agree to merge, is that I don't wanna see anyone get hurt. And so therefore, my recommendation would be, is that we would retain both foremen, which is one from the Forestry Department, and one from the Highway Department. However, through attrition, because one foreman will probably retire in the near future, is that at that point, you would just go with one foreman going forward, so there is a difference or a delta between what a foreman's rate of pay is, and what a laborer's rate of pay is. So we would save some money from there. And the last is, is that I think that when we can intermingle these budgets, and we have one vehicle maintenance line which we can really pay attention to, I think we're gonna save money. When we have- When we have one tools and supplies line for both departments, I think we're going to be able to save money. So I think we're going to be able to drive cost savings from there as well. Has West Bridgewater ever done this before? Because some people are going to say, look, you know what, we don't merge departments, we've never done that before, why would we even entertain this? Guess what? We did. About 20 years ago, your fire and ambulance was both managed by one person, the fire chief. But it was a separate budget, it was a separate department. The town recognized and realized that it was better to be able to combine those two departments, and that way you could pay attention to one budget, especially since you only had one person overseeing it. We did that in the 1990s, there's no reason that we can't do it again. If the Board of Selectmen are in favor of merging the departments, this is what your step process would be. Is that you would be able to take a vote to be able to merge the departments. Article 5, section 1 of the town bylaw states the following, quote, "The selectmen shall have general direction and management of the property and affairs of the town in all matters not otherwise provided by law or by these bylaws," end quote. There is no bylaw that requires you to have separate departments. There is no statute that requires you to have a forestry department. So therefore, you have the ability, since both departments answered directly to you, to be able to merge them with a simple vote. I took a quick synopsis of other towns. I cannot find, and I'm sure there's one or two out there, but I cannot find other towns that have separate departments for forestry and highway. They do have separate departments for parks and rec, but there is a difference there. The town of Lexington, for example, has a whole bunch of historical parks. So they have a parks department that only manages those parks. Their highway department will cut down a limb on Main Street, their parks department does not. The same way that their highway department doesn't go out and maintain that park, the parks department does. As you know, I worked for the town of Dartmouth. The town of Dartmouth has a parks and recreation department that handles all the beaches. Obviously, we don't have that issue. Probably some of us wish we did, but we don't. So they maintain the beaches and hire the lifeguards, but that's all that they do. When it comes to cutting the grass anywhere else in the town, the highway and forestry department does it. I mean, sorry, the highway department does it in the town of Dartmouth. All we're doing is looking to do the exact same thing. A simple vote to combine the departments would also require a vote to combine their budgets, because when I send out the budget message, I would notify the department heads that that's what we would do. If we were to do this, then we would negotiate contracts with a director and assistant director, and we would also notify the union just to be able to inform them that we were merging the departments. If we would like to do it with water, that is not just a simple vote of the Board of Selectmen. I've spoken to all three water commissioners about this, and I can tell you that there is not a consensus as to whether or not it should be done or it shouldn't be done. All three of them have a little bit different version or variation of what their concerns are or their thoughts are. The accounting would become more complex. First, we would have a commingling of funds. For example, our highway and forestry is funded through the tax side, and the water department is funded through the water rate collection side. So one immediate concern is, is that the tax rate may subsidize water rates, but truthfully, that can also happen in reverse. The water rates can subsidize the tax rate. Understand that the tax rate is always subject to a two and a half cap, but the water rates are not subject to that. So in theory, you could raise water rates in order to be able to cover some that the tax side cannot afford to do. There's also some accounting that has to be done. For example, a director of a DPW would be, or should be, partially paid from water rate and partially paid from the tax rate. Very important to note is that our current highway and forestry staff are not trained, are not licensed, and therefore are not equipped to work on the water distribution and/or the treatment system independently. So for example, if Wayne Parks, a superintendent, called our highway department and said, "I need your help because I need help over at the iron treatment plant, can you send over a couple of highway guys?" Can't work on it, they don't have the licenses. So the synergies are not as quick and easy if we have a full DPW department. Just for everybody's identification, I put down the current structure for the water department. You have water commissioners, they're obviously elected, a water superintendent who then oversees all the laborers and the staff. We were to look at a full DPW department, there's a couple of different versions or variations we could look at this, but you would have a director that would oversee highway on one side and water on the other. You would still show it as being separate because I guarantee you that the qualifications for a water superintendent will be vastly different than the qualifications of an assistant director, and the same thing with the laborers as well. Then you would also make a decision as to whether or not you would have water commissioners. I'll go into that in just a moment. If we were to combine the departments, there are some efficiencies that would be gained. The full department would have additional laborers on staff immediately. They already all work well together for snow and ice removal. And water currently goes out, and if they have to dig a trench to be able to access their pipes, they then patch the roads themselves. It may be efficient for the water department not to worry about actually patching the roads, but to actually go out, take care of the water distribution line, and then have the highway department come in and immediately backfill, allowing the water department to immediately move on to their next issue. You know, I don't know what the exact mileage is of our water distribution line, but I can tell you it's pretty extensive for a small town, and you still only have four laborers. So I see a lot of value in the water department being able to just fix the line and not having to worry about backfilling and filling the trench, or patching the road. there is a monetary impact. You're not going to save any money by just having a full DPW department, because you're still going to retain your water superintendent, and you're still going to need to have clerical staff. They literally have thousands of bills that come in now on a quarterly basis that have to be handled. They only have one and a half people. You're not going to provide any synergies in that situation. The water stipends in the union contract can be extensive and expensive. A grade one is $1,750 a year, and a grade four goes all the way up to $7,500 a year. And there is no provision in the collective bargaining agreement that restricts the number of employees that can gain the licenses. Granted, we could say that we could attempt to negotiate them in, but it's going to cost you something. They're not going to just say that we're going to give it up for free. So that means that if I'm a forestry or a highway, current forest or highway employee, first thing I would do is start studying, because they may not have to call me that often, but gosh, if I can make an extra couple of grand up to $7,500 just to secure the license each and every single year, it's a pretty good pay raise. Conversely, the stipends in the highway and the forestry are much smaller. I have allowed you, you could see that they range from $500 to $1,000 per person for boot clothing and CDL as examples. There is one that is $2,000, but we do provide a restriction that only one employee can secure that. So you don't have to worry if we combine them, that all of a sudden, somebody from the water department says, "Hey, I'm going to go and get my air brake mechanic certification so I can gain an additional stipend." They can't do it, the contract prevents them. And understand that everybody in water, for laborers, are already receiving the boot clothing and CDL stipends as well. So basically, what this page is showing is that if we were to combine them, I would argue that you would actually increase expense, you would not decrease expense. If however, that the Board of Selectmen did think that creating a full DPW department, what are your next steps? First, I would highly recommend that we have a joint meeting with the water commissioners, we almost already do. But we would have a joint meeting with the water commissioners because I think that the two boards should have a serious discussion about it. If both the water commissioners and the Board of Selectmen felt strongly that it was the right thing to do, the two boards by themselves cannot and do not have the authority to be able to merge the departments. The Board of Selectmen then would place a warrant at a next annual town meeting, a special town meeting. And the normal process, and I have experience with this in a different town, is that you would request the formation of a charter commission, normally appointed by the Board of Selectmen, but you also have to request necessary funding. There is no part-time board that is going to have the expertise to be able to go through this, because as I will say in the last bullet point, is that it's about an 18-month process. You normally will hire an outside consultant, it can range between $15,000 to $25,000. They have expertise in this, they come in, they do interviews, they put together an extensive report. The Board of Selectmen, as I said, appoints a charter commission. The charter commission then report back their findings, and if the Board of Selectmen liked the findings, you would then place a warrant at a future annual town meeting, a special town meeting, and they would then have to approve whatever it is that the charter commission comes up with. Once approved at town meeting, assuming approval, it then has to go to the legislature because the legislature then does what they call a home rule charter or a home rule petition, and they would approve it at that point, and therefore it would take effect. And again, as I said earlier, is that that normally, under the best of circumstances, takes about 18 months. That's the presentation.
Mr. Dillman, thank you. Board members have any questions?
David, for the savings that you put in there, the potential savings, could you break that out? And could you also take it one step further and do savings for projected on retirement
Ellen, you have any questions?
Yeah, I think, you know, where you explain the water and about there, it's fairly complicated. And, you know, that really is going to have to be studied out in a meeting between the commissioners and the board there before you even attempt to even go that way. Where it's going now, it's running, you know, efficient. Right now, I can't see any way to change that right now. The other thing has merits to do, and, you know, I know people who approach me, they are telling me, you know, "Well, maybe if you're going to do something like that, go up and get an engineer now instead of, you know, going..." We've always had the board here as a unit. We've always tried to hire within, and people have worked for us the years there, that we try to reward them with some of the jobs, but sometimes that's just another thought, whether we look outside, I think the whole thing is going to have to be studied down. There's an awful lot of things here to, you know, to consider, because I can see David's point where he studies this as, it's probably an easy way to track the budget down, where we got so many different phases over there, and probably from an operation point of view, it probably would be a good way to go. But the only thing is, I think there's a lot of things we have to address before we go to do this.
Well, I think I'm agreeing with you. I have personally no desire to take over the water department. I think, yeah, there's been hiccups, I think they've been addressed, I think they do a wonderful job. It's a total different beast, it's a specialty, it's a total different entity, and I believe it's best ran the way it is right now with the water department maintaining their separate. It's their thing, they do it well, you know, the town budgets can't affect their department, and I think it's just best left alone as far as the water department. 100% are in favor of a potential merger of the highway and forestry department. I think there's a lot of merit to it, but as far as the water department, I say leave it like it is. I think it's working great. And again, I know there's been some hiccups, but they could happen with any department, any business that could happen. And I'm not just saying it because you're here, I said it when you weren't here, I think you guys do a wonderful job. And I hope to see it continue. I have no desire to touch what you guys do, it's your thing and you do it well, so thank you.
Another thing, you know, that has happened, and it's happened for quite a while here, that we haven't really added personnel over there. We're basically running the same personnel for years, but it takes like the forestry department, I mean, they're taking on, I mean, they've never done the YAA, not that I'm against them doing the YAA fields. The high school had a separate thing, and now they're extending it, and this is all being taken care of. And you saw the men they have, and it's not too much. And I always believed, and that's why sometimes we come up with extensive thing as far as equipment there, they try to give them the equipment that they need at least, because they certainly don't have the manpower that we expect them to do the job. So there's some merit that way too, where we can have more people that we can focus and that we have to send a group where the problems are, because there's certainly a lot of problems out there too, in the working day.
I don't believe you guys, this is an official meeting for the water commissioners, but if you individually want to speak as individuals, you're more than welcome to. I'll let you guys speak as water commissioners, but not as the commission.
Well, after 38 years of running, being in the water department, there's many, many times the Board of Selectmen looked at creating a Department of Public Works. And after, it was, it went around and around, I don't know if some of you remember, the highway department used to fill our holes. We used to dig a hole, we were responsible for 24 hours, put a temporary patch in it, and then they would come back and locktop it with hot talk. And we had people falling down by their mailboxes and stuff like that, and water commissioners would call me out and say, "What's this deal here with this hole, this lady fell down?" I'd say, "Well, we called patch, we did a road opening permit, and went in, and they, it just didn't get fixed." So we started, we're responsible for the hole from the start to the finish, that's how that all came about. Then, after Easton went to a Department of Public Works, I asked Wayne Southworth, who became, he used to be the water superintendent, he became the head of the Department of Public Works. And I asked him how they were doing over there, and he said, "Whatever you do, don't do a Department of Public Works." He says, "All we created was management." He says, "We got the same number of laborers still doing all the work, and if you only got three guys in a department, and three guys in the other department, and you want to put six on a job, the other, that forestry department that day is completely empty and nothing's getting done. No laws are getting moved because they're all doing the highway job." The best way to do it is to add more laborers. And I know the water department, when I got there in 1976, we got the same number of laborers that we had in 1976. We haven't added any. And a Department of Public Works just seems to add, East Bridgewater did the same thing. They went to the Department of Public Works a couple of years ago, they bought all new trucks, they took all the water revenue, and they created more department heads, more vehicles, and then all of a sudden, the water rate had to double because they didn't have any money to build the iron removal plants and stuff for the maintenance of the water department. So then the people weren't, you know, weren't happy with that, and they all thought, when they voted for, you know, when you talk to the people, they said, "I thought we were going to save money." It ended up costing us money, you know, and they didn't get any more work done.
Well, I think that's, you know, even Claire and David's presentation, that it's not the route to go.
Yeah, so that's, we looked at it about three times in 38 years that I've been here, and it kind of came around to the same thing.
Donnie, you have anything?
I don't know, I'll sit.
All right. David, do you have anything to follow up?
I just came down here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have several points to make. You know, I'm trying to remain open-minded, but I have to, as Mr. Prueger has said, and I think the same thought process applies when it comes to forestry and highway. Okay? Great presentation, Dave, but I think sometimes it can be a little misleading, because when you talk about percentages of days off between the two departments, okay? You've got to keep in mind that we're governed by a union contract, we have vacation time, personal days, sick leave, so on and so forth. So the absences are always going to be there, okay? In regards to the $75,000 in saving, my initial response, what I heard through the town rumor mill, which we know is very active, having lived in this town for 59 years...
Usually very inaccurate, too.
Yeah. Sometimes, sometimes there's a beat of truth in there too, Jerry, and you know that. But I had heard that it would make us eligible as a town if we combined the departments for more road money through the federal and state government, okay? Since then, I've been told by Dave, that's not the case. under a merger. We've already heard figures bantered around in regards to salaries for these two new positions of Director and Assistant Director, $120 and $90, which is a substantial increase in what we pay them now. You're also looking at when they retire, what you're paying off for retirement benefits long-term, okay? So I don't see any... I really don't see any cost savings immediately, you know, on the horizon. You know, another point is, quite honestly, I've spoken, I've worked with all the guys in both departments, water, you know, separately. Nobody in that building is in favor of the merger, okay? Like Mr. Kruger alluded to. Okay, it's great, you've got three and three, and you send all six on one job, but in the meantime, the other job's not getting done. We work very hard. We work very well together with the Highway, you know, Highway Department. There is truth to what Dave says, that in the past, maybe some personalities played a role in it. But like he and I discussed, he told me he likes to govern by policy and not by personality. But I'm old enough to realize that no matter how many policies you have, personalities still play a role, okay? Right now, we have a current system under which both Sean and Chris are equals. This would put Sean under Chris. With all due respect to Mr. Ian Atelli, who I like and went to school with, he has no experience in roadways, highway maintenance, and those things of that nature. Sean has 20-some-odd years of experience, okay? I think the separation of powers is a good thing. Because I certainly wouldn't want a tree warden/forestry superintendent overruling a guy who's got the experience and knows what's going on underneath the road, whether it be in a basin or drainage culvert, whatever that might be, okay? Truth to what Dave said, as far as highway guys concerned about losing money, they will lose money. Because right now, currently under the current system, we are the last ones to be called in. If they... We only got so many trucks that can stop during the winter. If that rotation becomes a, you know, 14, 15-man, you know, rotation instead of a seven or nine-man rotation, they're going to get skipped sometimes, they're going to lose money, so it's directly going to affect their pocketbook. Another thing is, Dave alluded to the fact that when our current forestry foreman retires, that position would not be replaced. Cost savings there. Quite honestly, you know, you're not... Right now, everything works fine. You get a Highway Foreman, all right, who was just recently appointed. Had we known this merger was going to take place, maybe somebody else might have put into that position, okay? But it basically leaves the Forestry Department laborers no place to aspire to. You know, I got a guy that I work directly with, Chris Roth, who I think would be a great forestry foreman. No position for him now. No place to aspire to, okay? No chance for advancement or extra money. I think that's a detriment to the morale of the department. And lastly, the contract. Dave and I have spoken about this before. You know, some people don't really give a whole lot of credence to the union contract as far as, "Well, we just notified the union." Having been a former union rep myself for about almost 30 years, all that stuff has to be bargained. So you can sit here and say, "We notified the union," but you notified and bargained with the union. There's no guarantee the union will agree, okay? Now, you have certain rights under the law that you can offer your last, best, final offer and just implement, and then we have options that we can exercise. And hopefully, it would never, ever come to that. But Dave referred to the adage, and I think it was me that said it, and it might have been somebody else, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." We have what I consider a very genuinely good-working building over there. What I heard mostly during his presentation was a lot of clerical issues. How come we have four different line item budgets for this and six for that? That's all great. Better minds than mine can sit down and work through those problems and figure out how to merge those budget lines, non-duplication. I, for one, for many years, I've only been here for seven years in the employment of the town, but I can't believe what minimal budget the Forestry Department works on. We literally have, I think, a $1,500 repair budget. We've got machines out there that cost $18,000. One spindle broke last year, and I think that was a $2,000 repair. Next thing you know, we're knocking on people's doors going, "We need more money." But would I like to see a larger budget and maybe merged budgets? Absolutely. But as far as merged actual performance of duties, I think you're making a huge mistake if you go that route. I honestly do, you know? So, like I said, those are basically my points. And like I said, I've talked to everybody in that building. I don't think you're going to do yourself any favors by merging the two departments operationally. You want to do it behind the scenes in a paperworked fashion with combined budgets and things like that? I don't have a problem with that. I think if it saves you money, it's, you know, money well spent. But I just don't... I don't see the cost savings of the $75,000 and down the road more so. And, you know, operationally, I don't think... And I think this gentleman here works for Bridgewater, and they recently went to it and hasn't turned out so well. And like Mr. Kruger said earlier, it'll end up costing the town more money instead of saving money. So I just wanted to be... I just wanted our building's opinion to be heard. I know I'm the only one here speaking, but, you know, I know 99.9% of the people in that building feel the same way. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nice.
I really can't say anything about forestry and highway, because I don't know anything about it. But, and I don't know if I'm singing to the choir, David, if you were alluding to the fact that you wouldn't be promoting a merger with the Water Department. But, so to that end, what I was willing to say is, I would be completely opposed to that.
Thank you, me too. We agree.
We agree.
And by the way, we agree on a lot of things.
He gave me a hug today.
Behind the scenes, people are...
I know that's something I wouldn't have said a year ago, but I've learned a lot since then, and, you know, they've done a tremendous job of reworking what went wrong, fixing it, and planning for the future. You know, as far as the grade increases and the cost the town incurs when the laborers do rise up in their grades and the stipends increase, better negotiations on the contracts. I mean, I know that's a tough thing to say, but sometimes you just have to say, "We don't have it." And if we don't have it, we can't spend it. And that's, you know, as far as the Water Department as a whole right now, they're doing responsible budgeting. They have a good management team. And I think with strong mentoring from the commissioners to the staff and the laborers and superintendent, they'll have a great succession plan and future successes.
You know, James, a lot of people forget you spent a number of years on the Finance Committee. So if people don't know, you also spent many, many years on our Finance Committee, so...
Thank you.
Coming from numerous points of view. Thank you. All right. Anyone else have anything else?
Just one last point.
Yes.
I'll be short. I'm already short. To Eldon's point, to Eldon's point. If you were to not merge the departments and not increase the salaries by however much could be $40,000 to $50,000 to $60,000 between the two, yeah, we could really surely use another guy on the Forestry Department. Because the work that we have taken on over the last two years is just phenomenal.
And you guys do a spectacular job.
That new high school is a project in itself, you know? So... So let's not go about the golf course. I'm in favor of the golf course, so leave me alone.
All right.
Thank you. Go ahead, David. Okay. I just want to clarify one item. That this meeting is being televised. People are going to have an opportunity to watch it. I don't want bad information to get festered out into the general public. Our current... If our superintendent had not retired this past year, he would be making between $123,000 and $125,000. Our forestry superintendent last year made $90,000, which means he would make a little bit more this year. To say that salaries of $120 and $90 is a potential $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 increase is not factually accurate. I just want the record to reflect it. Rick?
This is now off that subject, but it came up at our meeting the other day, and I don't know if the board is aware of it. Is the rent control board meeting again?
Soon as we get members that want to serve on there. Right now, they can't even serve... They can't even meet because they don't even have a quorum.
Because we're owed $52,000 right now.
That's Water Department.
I know.
We're just about to interview the eight people behind you to serve on the rent control board. Nobody?
No. No, I'm not going to serve.
Go ahead.
If that's the case, our rent's going down. And just to just address what Dave just said. And I hear Dave what you're saying, but Lenny Graff is not here anymore, okay? So you've got a forestry superintendent who now makes roughly about $90?
Yes.
Sean makes roughly...
But Sean's not the superintendent. Right now, we don't have a superintendent.
You don't have a Highway Superintendent?
No, we have an acting superintendent.
You have an acting?
Correct.
Okay, so what's his salary?
So, again, let's... I, um...
I'm just trying to be relative here, because Lenny's not here anymore.
Yep.
Sean makes $90 or so. Sean's at, let's just say, $60. I'm just ballpacking it, okay?
So the last year that Sean had a full year just in the union, he made $84,000. Now, he is still a member of the union, and therefore, quite frankly, is that he's really helping the town out, because the collective bargaining agreement, which he is still a member of, he is only getting paid a small stipend of $6 per hour for every hour that he is currently filling in as the interim. So the town is saving money. But just because the town is saving money, doesn't mean that we're paying the correct amount for the job that's getting done. If we want to be good employees, attract good employees, retain good employees, we need to pay a market rate. And that means that if we are not going to merge, we are then going to pay, or at least I will advocate for, that we will pay our Highway Superintendent what the going market rate is for a Highway Superintendent, which is higher than what Sean is currently working for. And if we do decide to merge, then we should pay the current market rate for a Director, which would be in that range. And although, and I'm not saying this to embarrass Mr. Kruger, because Rick did an excellent job while he was superintendent, but Rick's salary with everything was close to that when he retired as well, he was deserving of it, and he was paid a market rate. So those numbers are not out of line.
And I understand that, but all I'm trying to do is draw relativity to the situation at hand. What they're being paid now, how much they'll be paid if this were to go through, and how much of that $75,000 alleged savings will be eaten up by those increased salaries.
My real initiative is more efficient, working with a full crew. So if there are days six lawns need to be mowed, a whole crew goes out and mows lawns. In the meantime, when there's a whole nother job that has to be done, the whole crew can go on that. There's going to be days where everyone's just doing their normal thing. But efficiency of manpower and equipment is really... Because I believe we can do more for less.
I agree on some occasions, but hardly ever, to be honest with you.
Just out of curiosity, who's to say that the current employees would be eligible to... Could you potentially lose Chris? Does he meet all the requirements to be a Director?
Anybody could leave any dime if they don't like what's going on.
That would be up to the board to set the qualifications in the job description.
That's whatever we set the qualifications as, just like any position.
So...
So it would go out for...
It would be... Travel away the board votes to reorganize it.
Yeah. I'm sorry. And now, you know, again, I didn't want to address every single point by point. This presentation was a general presentation of what we would be looking at from a structure standpoint. And as you notice, I never utilized anybody's names. I never made a recommendation as to who would fill what role, and whether or not we would do an internal candidate or an external candidate. I think the first thing we have to do is that we have to make a decision that conceptually, do we believe that this is the right combination of our departments for the town? Then we will backfill, hopefully, with the right people. If we don't think that conceptually this is the right thing to do by merging the departments, then all of those other arguments, for lack of a better term, is a waste of time.
Well, I personally would like to say, as I voice my opinion, I have no desire to merge the Water Department. I would like to go to a little more in-depth evaluation and process and plan to merge the Highway and Forestry. And, you know, I think that would be something we would put on you to do a little more in-depth, come back with recommendations on how to implement it.
Okay.
Well, as far as I'm concerned right now, I'm, you know, salary right now, not for the merge from what I heard. I think I have to hear a lot more before I would... You're still going to have to have somebody in charge, and the second in charge, as far as saving money, is going to be probably just making almost as much as the president is in charge. I mean, I can't see where the savings are going to be there. But anyhow, like you said, I've always been for studying, and I know Dave is doing the best he can and bringing all the facts up to us, and then we're the ones who are going to have to decide what we want to do here. I know now to do and expect to do the same, you know, same thing, even if you... Like Jerry says, well, we can send, you know, 10 people out to mow lawns and stuff like that. But there's 10 people that are not there for things maybe we should be doing on the other hand. I mean, so where's the same as there? I mean, so you're going to go forward one way and backwards the other way? I don't... I can't see it right now, but just keep it up. I couldn't see the golf course today, but it's running there. I asked a question about that the other day, and it says, "Well, they're paying their rent." That's all I got for an answer, you know? So, you know? But that doesn't mean anything. And then they had one guy that just stood up in a town meeting up there, and he's a great singer, was there, you know? And he says, "Hey, you know what we need now? We need $3 million for a... Get rid of that tent and a function hall, then it'll really work." And all the way when that thing was going through the town meeting there, that was going off in the background. One thing about it, a lot of people, they won't come to a meeting like you. You speak up, and they won't speak up. But sometimes, you know, you get them aside, and you can get the real true feeling of what they really feel, of how this thing should run, you know? And like I said, right now, you know, I'm not against what Jerry says, it keeps studying. And I know Anthony has spoken up there, and I thought he... I don't know if he still feels it's a good way to go, but he... But he's the one that asked for this study there from the board there, and we all went along with it. And that's why we're here, to try to get all the facts before the voters, and then they'll have a chance to vote on it.
Anthony?
I do believe there will be financial savings. I mean, I think that's quite apparent. But I would like to hear more of the employees' comments and concerns. So if the two of you don't mind, I'd like to sit with David and all the members of both departments to have an open discussion on what their concerns are.
Okay. So, sounds like both of you are in favor going forward with a merger plan coming back. And if you want to be on that committee to do more research, negotiations, and interviews, I'd be happy to ask you to be that liaison.
No, I've got no problem if you want to be on that segment.
So I'll entertain a motion to move forward with an in-depth review and plan to implement a joint Highway/Forestry Department.
So I'm oozing.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to amend that to add that Anthony will be the liaison to work with the...
Liaison.
Okay, thank you. We have motion. Second, any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
I assume at this time that you want no action towards the merger of the Water Department? That... Just going to take that into consideration.
I was a little bit in favor before tonight, but I think I don't want it... I wouldn't like to see the water rate subsidized, tax revenue, and vice versa. So, right now, I'm opposed to that.
I'm pretty sure, Rick, were you here when it became the private, the Enterprise Fund? Because part of the...
No, it was actually started... It was started in 1910. And the people in 1910, they started it as an enterprise fund.
Awesome.
And then they drifted away from it when income taxes came out, because people could write off their taxes, and they couldn't write off... write off their taxes, and they couldn't write off their water bill. So, they said, "Let's run the Water Department on taxation." So, we only sent out bills for like $30 a year to a customer, but the Water Department budget was being paid out of taxation. So, when two and a half came around, all of a sudden, there was no funding to build wells or anything like that, schools and everything, police, everybody had more demands. We're fighting for the money. That's when Eddie Azak said to me, "You've got to look and see what it's going to take to get us back on the enterprise system, because we're never going to be able to build any of these wells or buy this land." And then the Finance Committee said, "We'll never make it." I remember Bob Smith telling me, "You'll never be able to run your budget on with your own money." And we did. We did it, so...
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight? Here are nothing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks for tuning in.